It's taken, got a lot of questions asked, and we're going to start with Board of Education. So if we could start with Mary Ann, just go and introduce yourselves and your role.
I'm Mary Ann Rose, Chairman of the Board of Ed.
I'm Chris Darby, member of the Board of Ed. Joe Tripp, member of the Board of Ed.
Dave Burke, member of the Board of Ed.
Mr. Horace, Director of Curriculum Inspection and Technology.
Tim LaVoy, member of the Board of Ed.
Phil Horowitz, Superintendent Schools.
And Andrea Alfonso would have been here, but she was at the surgery. We're covering.
Oh, we wish her well. I'm sorry. She can watch it perhaps on video later. Well, we hope she feels better. We'll turn it to Tom. Do you want to start?
Yeah, so at the recent public hearing, the superintendent presented his budget. It went over that, nobody was at that meeting. So if there's any operating questions that you do have for the superintendent, he is here. And then otherwise, he wanted to just go over the capital plan and then work our way backwards into the operating budget.
Sounds good. Okay?
So this year, on page 135 of the capital plan, there's a transfer in combined here to the town and the board of $412,850. That is made up of $10,000 for airline trail improvements for the parking rack, $40,000 for a revaluation which will be ongoing in that fiscal year, very important number. The town wired for computers, already in a lot of computers. The police, the fire department has one of their frontline vehicles for the tour expeditions to be replaced with their medical vehicles. We have 17,500 set aside for planning for grant matches, a few grants that are outstanding that need require a match, and that's where those funds will come from. The grounds department needs to replace a Bobcat with attachments, it's a $65,000 item. The library needs to upgrade some furnishings in multiple areas, and the allotment that will be realigned to is 9,500. The police department requires an intoxilizer, that's a piece of equipment that's mandatory, and that is aged, and that's just a $9,750 item. The building maintenance requested the senior center roof to be repaired, it's a $43,000 item. And then as part of a ICE grant, there are components, there are components, and then Cromwell will put in a piece, and then some state grant money. So the ICE piece for the crack sealer, our piece is $9,700, and then for the Dozier, $29,200, and then a storm drain E200, that storm drain inspection equipment. Then we have system-wide Board of Ed technology, that's something we started last year, try to put one each side each year for technology for the Board of Ed, as their needs are always required. And then for Brownstone School, we have the girls bathrooms need to be replaced, the 62,000, the boys had been replaced last year, and the girls now need to get them at Brownstone School. The ICE, the other components that you said for some of the matching, the neighboring town Cromwell would put together 4710 for, $47,100 for those, the crack sealer, the Dozier, and the inspection equipment, and then there would also be 141,300 from like rent if the whole one. And then we also have BOSIP this year for $25,000 for park improvements, and $38,429 for replacement of sidewalks. Now, the departments need many, many requests, very detailed, very informative requests, and these are the allowances that were able to meet the current budget, and is set aside by the first select woman. Would you like to speak on any of your capital needs?
So you see the four-year capital plan, you've heard me say repeatedly that this is really an area that we want to address. There are needs in each of our buildings, including the high schools, the secondary complex, but especially our three elementary schools. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about a meeting I had today, Rick was at that meeting. The decision has been made to close the modular units to raise them as of July 1. One of the things that the Board is concerned about is the parking and the bus loop at Gilverslie School, actually the pattern of all three elementary schools, but more particularly Gilverslie School. So we have the town engineers working with a group of us, Rick included, Paul, Carl, to come up with a plan. And so there's a number in the second year and next year in this capital plan, but I just, even though it's, tonight I wanted to draw your attention to it, I don't think that's a big enough number, based on some of the preliminary proposals that we have. But this is our best effort to guess at some of those bigger projects that we see down the line. The other thing that I've noticed as superintendent of school is that we do not cycle things. We don't cycle the painting, the furniture, and the computer equipment. And we're attempting to not just do something when it breaks, or when it looks horrible, but in a cycle. And so that is also reflected in this five-year capital plan.
Frank?
Rick, can you just expand on the bus loop? We talked about this before, maybe two years ago, I think. Yeah. Just refresh my memory then.
And we've always, it's always been a lot of safety, and we drop off, and we drop things off on the park, and it's a long distance. We actually made some direct drop off at the entrance. All of that's good, but with the change that you're proposing, you actually have a grade down there, recognize that. It's not good now, and it could be way worse when we add another grade to it, the teachers and the agents, and it's, you know, it's a facility you certainly are going to use it for a longer time. It does need, for safety sake particularly, it needs to be addressed. We had a period of, I thought, a lot of this, but the fix is, it's a very difficult science now, it's got grade issues. To really do what we're trying to do, separate the bus loop from the park, and come up with a new plan, it's not going to, it's not, it's not well assessed, the $25,000, the rest of the, but we're not, we're at a concept stage, one way to know, something probably should be.
On page 140, we didn't talk about, where there's plant and system improvements for the sewer plant, $115,000. We're waiting to see what time bind comes up with our capital plan. Obviously, there's a lot of needs at the sewer and water departments, and that's just a little, another number that we had agreed upon last year, the Board had agreed upon using $115,000 as the capital transfer in, in there, attempt to break even. So I stayed with that same number. And then water, you'll see on page 141, you'll see a similar, $115,000 allotment, either the use allowance or what the directors put in and for, all areas, this is not what the directors put in, these are just attempts to utilize the funding that's available to accomplish as many tasks as possible.
So to be clear, both those, water and sewer, are going to be running $115 in the rears? Both accounts?
That was not the way that you designed it.
No, 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 I just want to know where we're at. Or where you're projecting.
They designed the budget as an attempt to break even. We'll see how that, as the second year comes into play, with the full year of all the adjustments that the selectmen made, we'll hopefully attempt to get to that break even point.
But I'm referring to this, this number, the $115, so that's what we're short on both of those for this fiscal year? You mentioned both years, I'm referring to just this year, the $115 numbers. And both water and sewer? Yes. Can you elaborate?
Those are the capital contributions.
Correct.
For both years.
Okay.
Any other questions on capital?
Yeah, back on page 135 on capital, you mentioned the building planning department grant match, 17-5.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I don't know if these microphones are not working. The match grant, the $17,500 on the building and planning department.
Sure.
Can you elaborate on that one? What that grant is, what it would entail? You mentioned there were two.
One is the corridor study. There is a match for the corridor study.
What's that? We'll start there.
That is a review of all of the traffic patterns on Route 66, and it's a review that the DOT will do if we're selected as a grant, and there's a match required. And it is an application through the Council of Governments that we are doing with East Hampton. In light of the increased traffic, particularly from Marlborough and East Hampton and into Portland, it's important to update and take a look at what the situation is in terms of Route 66 as a corridor, as a travel for Middletown through to Marlborough.
And what was the second one?
I don't know the second one. That's the one that I talked with Deanna on. I can find out for you.
All right, so one of them is for the 66 corridor.
Yep.
The roof, part of your answer, you said repair, Tom? I'm sure you meant replacement at $43,000 for the senior center? Or are you sticking with the word repair?
It has to be replacement.
Okay, and even that number seems high for that size building. And did we look into possibly doing like a metal roof on it, an overlay?
That's a...
At these kind of numbers, you could easily, and then it'd be much longer than an asphalt roof.
I'm sure the director won't look into that one, because they have authority to do that project.
Who's the director?
The director is Rick Kelsey.
I can show this, we kind of felt the same idea at the top. What we did is, I don't feel the copper against the wood, all kinds of reasons, because there was a couple of, I mean, a few folks had passed the resolution back in August, and said, "La Rache Catholic School is addressing infrastructure needs." And Ananis said that we're going to look at all infrastructure needs, and had a report last year, first of 2016, that we would be looking at. So what I did is I looked at it, not knowing if that report was ever prepared, I don't know if it was, if it was. So I put in, I took a look at infrastructure needs, many of them, as a matter of fact, there were three of them. This particular roof, it was put on in 1991, it served its purpose, and it is showing signs of wear. I actually got different prices, very close, within $14,500. One was through the, the other was through the option, the consultant, they were, they both came in, and I had, I had, I had a gutter stood, the gutter replaced, the gutter garage, their bushes, their whole bushes. I was, as a person, the town was testing, I kind of said, "Please." I got a lower price, it was really close. Would you do it cheaper? You might be able to, but I think you're going to do it much cheaper, and you're going to have to change. Things have changed slightly since then, unfortunately, we need to add this, but after this was prepared, we have a bad windstorm, and we lost the bunch of shingles on the highway when it was 1998. So I went up after that, that probably, that would probably be more indeed actually more priority for senior centers. After, I just had quite a few of that stuff, after that, that's a lot of school issues. So I may suggest, only by that might be the more urgent issue. We've got a notebook of roofs, we're going to root for these next week, so I'll bounce them over to that. They got a notebook of roofs, but the $43,000, I don't think we can do much of that.
What's your personal opinion on possibly a metal overlay?
At the Highway Garage, I would say yes, because of the windfall. At the senior center, we've gotten good live life of the shingles, 1991, with the Oregon shingles. I don't know as I would change the seniors, asphalt shingles, aesthetically down there. I'm not, I just said so, it'll be probably, I'm not sure, it might be, I would stay with asphalt, obviously, I might consider the highway garage, because of the windfall, we have three or four hours, highway garage, we had that, we had that replaced and repaired three or four years ago, we might have got it, so we don't, I think it'd be better off as asphalt here.
Yeah, my thought, like, I would say the Highway Garage, if you think that's a better candidate, if the numbers are close, for longevity, you're way better off.
What we typically do is, is I try to get straight prices, you know, for this stuff. And yeah, we might start to.
Thank you. I guess the other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for closing the modulars, I think that was a wise decision, and I think in time you're going to see that plays out well.
Let's go to page 132, which is Parks and Rec. They requested to be put on tonight, as the director was able to be here tonight.
Tom, did you want to say anything more, or was there any, were you leaving Board of Education operating? Are there any questions from the Board for Board of Education operating? We talked a little bit about capital, but in terms of their operating budget. Mike?
I guess one, sorry.
Go ahead, I had a couple.
And Fred has two, okay. We'll start with you, Ben.
No, go ahead.
The first one that comes to mind, and I'm not sure if you would know this offhand, what percentage in the budget do you set aside for vacations that aren't taken and then paid? And that, I don't expect you to know this offhand.
I couldn't, but I looked at you, that that's been one of the objectives in negotiating to reduce or eliminate that.
As far as the contracts you're referring to?
Yes.
I guess my question, and you may not know the answer, and that's fine, I would just want to know that, exactly what, because there has to be a number in there, I'm not sure who comes up with that number, business manager, I'm not, who do I ask?
We could do, we can't shoot that.
I'm going to want it. I will want that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fred?
Yes, sir. How are you? A couple of things I had circled, I looked at this, let's see if we can find it. Yeah, let's see, on the certified, with the staff salaries, are we going in a, they look pretty flat, are we going in an upward trend with our hires, additional hires for the certified staff this coming year?
So we're doing a couple of things this year, Fred, and that, one is, so there is an addition of about 3.85 FTE, but we are reorganizing many of the positions, particularly in the technology department, and we have, so it's flatlined because we have a significant amount of retirements. We have six or seven different people who are retiring at a $80,000 to $85,000 a year salary, and then when we create a space for a new person, we don't, we don't put it at 80, we usually put it around, I think, about $51,000, which is sort of middle of the road for new hires. So that's why you see that decrease. We also have an increase in our open choice grant money, and we are attempting to use that to buy some of these new positions, or to pay for some of these new positions as well. So that's why you see a flatline. But we are trying to expand moderately, certainly not in a global way.
And then the non-certified salaries, was there a shift? It looked, that also looked about the same over the past few years, non-certified to certified. Is that including all staff, including custodial staff in that, or is it just?
So I don't know exactly which line you would mean, but again, that does shift from year to year, and it, one of the things that would be included under the non-certified umbrella would be your paraprofessionals. And that number is generated by, in a greater extent, our special education need. And so we, when we need more assistance in the classroom due to, you know, kids with more severe needs, we sometimes hire paraprofessionals for that purpose, whether it's a severe behavior problem, whether it's a severe physical problem. We have an increase in medical needs, students with severe medical needs, so we need an additional personnel, and that would be the non-certified staff that you see there. We haven't expanded our custodial staff at all, other than the one position that we added last year.
So that, the effort to, an effort to keep placements in town, for example, special education, that staffing will play into that.
That may play into it, that may play into it. For instance, I'll give you a great case of the opposite way. Our new director has been working very hard to bring some of those students that are outside of our district back into our district, and in doing that, may have to incur some increases in paraprofessional costs because of the requirements, but you'll see a reduction at another end for high-cost tuitions.
Right, which I think is a great, great idea. Social Security, Medicare, just out for my edification, things may have changed, but teachers at one time, for example, were not covered, I assume they still are not.
They are not.
So this is paraprofessionals.
Your non-cert staff, or when you pay the certified staff, for instance, when you pay our teachers for their coaching positions, I believe those will have Social Security tax taken out of them. Do I stand? Yeah.
So...
But not salary-wise.
Extracurricular.
Right.
Lastly, the, the last item, $81,000, which is dues and fees, I see that jumped up, and I know you have professional organization, I'm sure you belong to, like CAPE, the Superintendents' Association, but were there additional ones added that caused that kind of increase up?
I remember this question, and there's a specific answer to it. Anne, do you happen to know specifically why the dues and fees have increased, or Krista, do you? I wasn't, I'm not sure, and I could get back to you with that answer for next week.
Okay, yeah, it just seemed like it jumped up more than I would think, and we're going to be the existing, you know, existing fees, but perhaps it's, they're going to do those kinds of new pieces.
I don't want to misspeak now, so I'll get the real answer and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Ben, would you do me a favor and re, because we're taking notes, rephrase that question so I know exactly what...
I'm looking for the exact dollar amount budgeted for vacation days. The days that are not taken, how much are you setting aside for that? And if you really want to take it a step further, I'm then going to want to know that number for last year what was used.
So vacation payout?
Correct. What you budgeted for versus what's used. So I will look for a reference of the year prior, if you could do that also, it would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Okay.
We'll move on to Parks and Recreation, and I see that Ralph is here. Hi, Ralph. And Sean, and Carl. So we will turn to page 132. As you can see... Do you have any more questions for the Board of Ed? Not at this point. Thank you, Mary Ann, and thank you, Board and staff, for coming tonight. Thank you very much. No, she did not. Sorry. You know what, Laura, I had one at the workshop, and you didn't take it, right? So... She did give one to me, the public hearing, but you didn't take it, right? Okay. If there's anything specific, I'll let you use... Tom?
Okay.
Ron, Parks and Rec?
Yeah, page 132. So you see there's not a, not a big swing on this budget, it's about 5%. A lot of that is being driven by the payroll going up, the minimum wage going up, a lot of Sean's employees are the minimum wage, and that is going up quite a bit, so that's a driver. He has seen some improvements in some of the revenue areas as of last year, and hopefully that's continuing into this year, and I think it is, and continuing forward. On page 133, it's showing the expenses again, line 12001, it's 15 payroll, that's a decent increase in that component of loss, just for that factor of the increase in the minimum wage. The overtime, that's for custodial overtime, as his programs grow, there's more time the custodians at the schools are out and about and needed, and that's, we cover that in the Parks and Rec plan, and for town events, they cover that in my finance budget. Electricity, you know, electricity itself is going up, and we'll have to see as how, this will be the first year really with water, sewer, lighting at the Riverfront Park, so we'll have to keep an eye on that, hopefully there'll be revenues that'll offset the SAT expenditures, as well as any of the actual expenditures incurred by actually doing some of the events. So hopefully that year, this year, Sean will see that, and we'll follow that, and that may be, you know, unforeseen in this budget. Programs can generate off of his program revenue, so I just, I wanted to at least give you the opportunity to look at that, and have you any questions for Parks and Rec? I know Sean is here, and the director is here.
What property does that electric cover? What do you think?
That's a part, there's various properties we have that are related to parks, you know, where I said...
I'm looking for a little more specific, Tom. Pavilion? What's that?
There's numerous areas in town, Maple Avenue, wherever.
No, I'm curious which ones have meters, I just, for my...
Go and have that knowledge of where they are, I mean...
Carl, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Brownstone Park, yeah, Field Light. We've got, looks like that one. Yeah, that's...
Do, any of, I know the school went through some upgrades to go to LED and all that and looked into it, who would be the one to look into in those? Could it be beneficial? Maybe you're the wrong person to ask, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I mean, everything at the Riverfront Park is brand new, right? We're going to add a couple of those down there.
And those will probably be newer.
Those will be, I mean, Field Lighting, Brownstone Park, that, you know, major, major, major hall.
Just because we see all this LED incentives, and, you know, if, if, we see our electric rates continue to just keep rising, maybe we are better off investing in switching them over, and at least seeing, I'm not sure it will, but something to look at.
The town did do, the town did do an incentive program.
Right.
Previously to the Board of Ed, for the town buildings and, and areas. And even though parking lots were, were assessed to not change in the parking lot very much.
Okay. And maybe the numbers don't work to change, maybe that's the reason, but it's, if, if we could save, something to look at.
That's a whole night, wouldn't you say, Rick? There's a lot to.
Thank you. Any questions for Sean?
Questions on Parks and Rec? Or anything you want to add?
The other, skip, skip back to. I'm going to go to page ninety-nine, that's the library.
And Janet, you want to introduce your board that's with you here tonight? Janet Marchek, Director is here.
Hi, I'm your Board Chair, Marco, and David, and Ben, who's running the end, and Ben's his riding guy, and he's a new member.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Tom?
In the library, there's a, a swing of the, between the regular payroll and the part-time payroll. I think about twenty or two thousand, twenty-five thousand, there was a person that became a full-time employee throughout the town through a sharing position with the assessors department. So that's why you see some monies move up to the regular payroll line item. But the, there has, the not equal drop was as the, the director feels that there's a, with some of the new requirements and some of the additional time off people have, as well as required people to get time off for part-timers. The, with coverages, they, they felt that there was a lack thereof. So some of that money was added into the budget for the part-time to cover additional coverage. The remainder of the budget is relatively flat. Any questions on that? What's the majority of that postage used for?
Um, mostly, so what we do know is that we switched a lot of the, but there's some, some jobs that are unfolding, materials, people they hold up.
Thank you.
Questions? Is that?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Next department, Tom?
Yes, go back to fifty-six, page fifty-six.
Tom, if I may, I apologize, back on the last one, ninety-nine.
Sure.
What's the reason for the heating fuel, the proposed budget for, why did it go to ten-seven when the degree days were warmer than last year? That's, I mean.
That's, that column is a revised budget. That's not the actual that was spent this year. We have to look that up.
The act, it says actual expense would be eighty-five from seventy-two.
Oh, for last year?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I'm curious, dude, why are we budgeting, why are we budgeting so much more? That would be my question. Is there, is there something we're anticipating for the couple thousand dollar budget increase? I di, I didn't know if a heating system changed, or, you know, there's a couple thousand dollar budget increase.
Yeah, I mean, it's, right now, it's the same, yeah, the budget stayed the same. The actual was eighty-five hundred. Yeah, it just changed, didn't change because of the.
What was that?
Didn't change that.
I'm sorry. Well, just didn't change it. It seemed, it didn't seem, well, that seemed like a reasonable number.
But from last year to this current year right now, so in two thousand fourteen, the actual was eighty-five hundred. So what did we really spend so far in the budget we're in right now today? Do you, you don't have that with you, or do you? Because the ten-seven, I mean, that's already over and done with as far as budgeting, but Ben saying that seems pretty high. That's twenty-five percent higher than the previous year, right?
Yeah.
Natural gas hasn't moved that much as enough.
I don't, well, I didn't see that increase in the other budgets, and I'm assuming you have, like, fuels, so.
As of, well, forty, about forty-two hundred.
It's only forty-two hundred so far this year.
It was a warm year.
When is that up to February first or March first, that number?
Probably March, probably, I'll probably, right, February.
Yeah, so that might be a place.
It was a warm, warm weather.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, this was also a warm year, so you don't, you don't want to, yeah, you don't want to under-budget for, just because of an anomaly, you know, so I, I get that.
Yeah, it is a little bit. Probably, it's probably a little there.
Okay. Thank you again.
Anything else on page ninety-nine? Next page, Tom?
Okay, page fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven?
This is the Public Works Director budget. This budget had a, but you see the decrease in payroll, there was a supervisor of operations position that the person's retiring that is not funded, that was in this budget, that was a split between this budget here, fifty percent, and resource recovery. So there's a drop of payroll. Hazardous waste continues to be on the rise, fluctuates here and there. And then diesel, we had a nice read, so that's, we dropped that down, and equipment is no change.
The hazardous waste line item, is that for stuff we're getting rid of, or is that stuff that's brought into the transfer station? Right, okay, that's what. Yep. And we're getting rid of a lot of bad things.
Okay. Page fifty-nine. The highway department. This, in this department, there was, in payroll, you'll see a bump there, and that was pretty much to take the half-year, take, take a position from the supervisor of operations position and create a employee in the highway department, really, is what we're doing there, more or less of a half-year position is funded in this budget, and. And. Equipment rental, there was a few pieces of equipment that were failing the department, so there's a, I'm likely thought that we're going to have to rent those items because they were not funded through the, they were not funded through the capital plan, so there's a little bit of an increase in equipment rental.
Rick, do you know what those pieces are? Is it worth looking into further?
We need to get, we need to replace the pay. So we, we contemplated a rubber tire paper, but we're not exactly sure of what we need or want, so the thought process was important, just to possibly this year rent a paper, or to kind of use it to get, to really see what we, what we like. In lieu of replacement this year, maybe a little bit for my rent, actually. So that was the thought process on, on that particular piece, the sweeper. Our sweeper is another piece that really is indeed, was very expensive, both of those pieces. So that would be another, we're kind of hedging our bets, the sales, we've been down before, we've got a breakdown, so we have to. So we're kind of hedging our bets, we'll get a little more rental money if we, if we're able to.
Thank you.
Any questions on fifty-nine?
Uh, yes, Tom, Rick probably is here. Um, yes, he is. Trees, tree removal replacement. Looking at, back to two-four-fifteen, there was, most of the money was spent on that. This year, as I recall, that is not the case, and, and, you know, I just want to revisit that for a minute. At least as of January thirty-first, only forty-five hundred dollars had been expended on that account.
I can help you a little bit, Gary. I believe the decision was made by first weapon, that, I think it was a good decision, that part of, a lot, a significant part of that money that went out to issue the trees, correct, you were on little sex animals and some tree plantings, around the parks, I'm not mistaken. So I only have used, and I don't, that money has not been spent, so it's incomprehensible. I have spent up to the other half of that, as typically I do, I, I believe right now, I have about two thousand dollars left to do this year. I always have it in case we get. So I will expend all of my portion of that, I don't know where you guys are at with your tree plantings. Half of that was really, half of it was planned.
Twenty-six hundred dollars additionally was utilized to plant some trees down at the Bronco, the Riverfront Park.
That's where that was.
We're putting a street sign down, down the north side. Along the whole property that, the ball field is on, because as we're doing the renovation, we're going to plant, plant things and trees all the way up.
Okay, so that, and that just has not been done, obviously.
It has, yeah, right, right. You see that that entire bunch, I think that much of that entire piece was.
Stumps and stump grinding, I noticed, driving around, you know, we still have, I know that's a gradual process, but were we do, did we do any of this past cycle?
Yeah, it, some, we did some, or four, we did a little bit of stuff.
Okay.
It, it kind of, it goes like this, it's, the twenty thousand dollar tree, that we and what we try to do is balance it out, like we're supposed to. I have bad unseen trees, and the priority is to take those trees down. If I have monies left, I mean, try to get into a little stump driving, and then this year, we decided that which we've done last year, is some of it gets spent on planting, some of it gets spent on removal, some of it gets spent on grinding. It's kind of, it's probably, from my perspective, is, safety is the pilot. The notification is somewhat sensitive. Right now, paramount trees, we're using that, safety is the pilot.
Yeah, I noticed a few myself.
Yeah, yeah, a lot.
Okay, so I had.
Ever Source is also doing some tree trimming, I don't know if you'd call it.
They're going to start about a month and a half.
Quite a bit. And I shared that, and you shared it in the newspaper, Rick.
I only have two. Same on the heating again. Any reason for that number?
Dropped it down by four thousand.
Yep.
Fluctuates based on, I mean, this is a really cool year. The highway garage runs, it runs oil and it runs propane, which can fluctuate tremendously and be very expensive, so.
So obviously the degree days triggered that. Um, the street signs, I'm imagining that was all the replacement we did, Rick, around town?
Yeah, yes. We did good this year. We've got about ten or fifteen thousand dollars more, and we'll be compliant with the federal rules.
That was, that was my next question. Just because I wasn't here, what's a normal number that we would want to budget in a regular year? I know we're going through.
All year, I think we used to do, you know, four thousand, fifty, four thousand, whatever.
Okay.
I believe to, to replace the signs, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on page fifty-nine?
Page sixty-one, vehicle maintenance. Just a little bit of increase in the equipment repair rental, which is, the agent equipment, yeah, needs below the prior year expended by both years.
Questions?
And the payroll, how many people does that encompass?
Two.
Thank you.
That equipment repair. I don't know where we are now, so I can go through. Cost of, I think we have, we have, we have, we don't stay up for the year, all the way to California. Get bike shut down, we have different repairs, but right now, we're unfortunately at this stage. And we've got all these sort of, we can get parts, we do get parts, it's a lot of time there. Costs is disgusting. So, that equipment repair is a hard one. Watch out for that.
Page sixty-three, town engineer. That's a, that's a moving target, it's based usually on, you know, the revenues and streams that are coming in and other requirements that are out there. Some years, like, say, back in fourteen, we were fifty-three, and twelve, we were at thirty-five, so it's, it's definitely a moving target based on the activity in town. Page sixty-five is street lighting. Again, put a, put an increase on there, just as, we had had a locked agreement with Trans Canada that was kind of coming to an end, I believe in December, and everything we look at, it seems like electricity prices are going up. Page sixty-seven, number of grounds maintenance. That has the three full-time employees in the one-one-oh-one account, the one-one-oh-three account is a one-seasonal part-time employee. Their, the grounds maintenance overtime force, no removal is included in their oh-thirty-six budget. Uh, there's a little bit of contract work, um, that's the increase there. I think that was to do some work at the Riverfront. And it was, the increases that were requested in this budget were either to try to help maintain, there, there were, obviously, there was more items requested, um, and they. Um, and they were to attempt to help, you know, increase park work that is, uh, that is part of this budget, too. As well as all the grounds.
Carl Johnson is here, questions?
What's the category waste services cover? Not that it's a large number, I'm just curious.
Garbage that the, uh, that they, they bring into the resource recovery system.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Reason why we, if you feel we services line item, go back to, a little bit of a dilemma on that in the past. Where I hadn't been getting charged, and we corrected that in fiscal year fifteen. So you'll see it, you know, going forward again. It was owed to the, to the department, so we, we paid, we paid the resource recovery for quite a few years back. Town building maintenance is page sixty-nine. This includes three full-time employees. Pretty straight. Really not much going on there. For changes, since they're, they're in shape.
Any questions on building maintenance? Okay, Tom?
Page seventy-one, snow removal. This is another one that, this is all arbitrary based on what is occurring in the budget, what is occurring out there. You pretty, you know, as needed, you pretty much pay as, pay what you need. You know, in the years when you need it, you need it, and years when you don't, you don't. But, uh, this road materials includes the use of, uh, regular road salt. And, uh, the sand that, uh, we produce from our sand pit.
How are we on salt storage? Did we stock up?
We did not. Right now, we're about thirty, thirty-five thousand, thirty-seven thousand. Which is, I mean, beyond what we're supposed to drive. I'm going to, uh, go, yeah, we purchase, we're bound to the way we operate. We put in an estimate of what we need, which is, we said, we could, uh, bound, take a half better route, which I have. We can have any more. Question, to, uh, fill her up. I saw this, I was, so typically I do, I don't know, there's lots, you know, what to do that ones. Or doesn't, might not be this correct. About ten thousand of it is on overtime. Which is, we have twenty-five thousand, which are, whoops.
On that, Rick, has that, salt shed issue, has that been resolved? Where are we with that?
It, it has not. Um, we're actually, we now have a direction, which is, pretty much by the DEDP. We are at the first stage of a proposal to them for a total relocation of that facility to the transfer station. Phase one would be to investigate, is it easy to involve putting up a transfer station? Due to the depth of garbage, the size of garbage, putting sprays that we have there, uh, second. So right now, uh, there has been a proposal submitted to the first level, which he has submitted to the ECD. For their acceptance, and now in phase one, I'm probably in a three or four phases. First phase is like more of an exploration type of phase, uh, to look at. Is it even easy?
And that, that location would resolve the aquifer issue, which, uh, is.
That would, that would resolve the aquifer issue.
Yes.
Oh, okay. There are other reasons. That's cool, that's. That one would passify.
Thank you.
All right. We're a fire chief and fire marshal, are you guys coming back tomorrow, or? Sticking with the course. That is, that is the general fund remainder for Public Works and Library. The other components, which normally, when we're done last, we could have done tomorrow. So now we're going to, uh. We're still, we've still gotta do the special, we gotta do, uh, special revenue for your, all your funds? Then you can talk on here, okay? So, the one-four, one thirteen and one fourteen and one sixteen through one eighteen, pretty much, the director's gone through. And, and as, as we've gone through, as our expenditures, and tried to give them as much as where we think they would be within reason. To what we could, except obviously, the director has different ideas on capital, um, on capital non-recurring. The revenues are very similar to the proposed revenues from last year, with pretty much, um, adjustments to the user charges for the variance increase. We want to see, the, this, uh, last year was the first year, this year that we're doing, is the first year of that staggered implementation. So it, it's tricky to find, figure out how the whole effect will occur until the final components are implemented, which will be coming soon. Next year should have the, generally the full effect for the revenue structure. So again, we'll, we'll continue to watch these revenues as they go. That's really my spiel on reven, on water and sewer. We did have, in fiscal year fifteen, we did have a lot of repair issues in sewer as the plant gets aged. There are sewer, um, issues that do come up and, uh, and, and we continue to watch that area.
On page one thirteen, what's the other revenue, uh, line item zero-zero-three-five-four?
I wanna, off the top of my head, I can't remember that, from, uh, this is, for the hundred dollars?
Yeah, so I won't beat you up over a hundred bucks.
That's just like miscellaneous, but I believe that, I want to say that the prior year, I want to say would have been insurance. Proceeds.
Is there any break?
Distribution, you mean, Tom?
No, just, I mean, I think there was damage some, to the plant.
Oh, okay.
Other revenue sources tied to that?
Yes.
Yeah, the hundred dollars in sewer. Yeah, that could be, yeah.
And which line item would show, and it probably comes in under user charges, I guess, for the dumping fee for non, for septic users in town?
Process materials, are they?
What's that?
Process material.
What line item?
Three-fifty-three. I lowered that a little bit this year because they were shut down for part of the year, so we weren't accepting. So I wasn't sure if I was gonna hit the, the thirteen thousand mark. So I lowered it back to where we had been, assuming an opening for a full year. That does assume to be accepting.
Thank you. Any other questions on those?
Go to one-twenty-two, which is Town Eight Road. That's, the state gives us money to fix roads. Um, and obviously not nearly enough for what we need, but it's definitely a great improvement than what it once was. So we do thank the state for that money. And, uh, and the Public Works Department utilizes it yearly to, uh, do a lot of their chip sealing program, as well as, uh, other repairs and improvements. Uh, to, uh, some guide rails at times as needed, and other, anything that can improve a roadway.
How do they come up with that number, based on mileage, miles of road?
That's just a form, it's a formula that they've come up with. It just comes out and states us here, your number.
Part of it, they send us every year the miles of road that we have, and then Rick reviews it and submits any changes. So it's part of the formula, this is the miles, yeah.
Thank you.
Which can fluctuate.
Yeah, it used to be very, very low, like, you know, under, almost like a hundred thousand. And then all of a sudden improved it up to two forty.
But that's not, that, that's due to how the state has determined they want to.
Fund it.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's not due to the roads and.
Right, I was just. No, I was curious more to the formula versus the number. Thank you.
Um, one-twenty-seven, resource recovery. Resource recovery is another one that's tricky to hit the revenue number. On the mark, we try, but it's a tricky one. We haven't gone really up in the fee structure on that in a while. The last time that wasn't met really well by anybody. The metal has dropped off quite a bit, and that was, that was helpful. At one point, it was really driving, and it hasn't been that great. Single stream is reasonable, but it hasn't brought the numbers that you would hopefully like to see. As this pays you through a process would work. You see, you see a dip in the transfer, and again, that was half of, um, the supervisor of operations in his benefits in this package, so, you know, that was, uh, why there was a, a drop there. The, not, and that effective being, uh, not as much as, uh, is, is revenues, uh, projected being down by, uh, twenty thousand, clearly because we're not hitting that number. And, um, you know, the need for some improvements. Now, one of the things that, you know, we don't even factor into this budget lately, and is capital needs. Uh, because in theory, it was almost like the general fund was just transferring the money into the, to buy, to buy this, because it was in a deficit flow. But, still doesn't mean that there aren't capital needs out there. This, again, was not funded, I know that there are areas that Rick will express, I'm sure, lately of, uh, con, you know, containers that are, that are required to be, needed to be purchased, and, and, uh, that may need to be addressed and looked at at some other point, or, or at this point. The, uh, payroll there is two, two men, um, with the related benefits. Service contract is, is more or less, is rental, the rentals have gone up based on some of the deep requirements. Um, and, uh, is also service contracting is where we charge the mulching. We used to burn, um, things and don't burn so much anymore, so that we mulch. That number probably, in theory, needs to be higher, but, uh, we left it a little bit higher, but not, not too, too high. Yeah, I'm sorry, I spoke in the wrong area, that, that's, that's the mulching, the fifteen thousand. The equipment rental is the containers, and that's, uh, gone up, that's where that, we're asking for that going up a little bit. As you can see, the, the amount number there.
On the payroll, that's just two employees?
Yes.
Question, Tom, is the, the medical insurance, that is correct, two employees?
Again, it's based on their, whatever their life is, whatever their life expected, whatever they're doing, so, uh.
Like a family plan kind of thing?
Yeah, based on whatever they do, that's whether, maybe one doesn't have it, I'm not, you know.
Tom, how about the bags and stickers at the bottom of that page?
That's where you buy the, the actual, well, that, the, the five-eighty-two, is that's, that was, I don't know what, what happened that year. I guess we had a good year where we had a ton of bags, which was very unusual.
Like leftovers?
Yeah, we had, we must have had good years where we bought, or we weren't selling so good. Because you have the small, the medium, and the large. And more, most of the time, the large eat up the majority of that purchase. And then you have the small and the medium, and then that gets rotated in a different year. That one year, which is definitely unusual, because if you go back and look at that item, it's always spent. Uh, it wasn't spent, so, um, we had bags, so they did a good job of maintaining them and tracking them. The, the five-eighty-two, that's your stickers that you get when you go over there to, to go in your car.
Yeah.
So, you know, the, the, the majority of that is the purchase of bags, there's really only one company, Waste Zero, to acquire those from. Not a lot of competition.
And you may have said, sir, the reason for the payroll drop?
Is the, is the supervisor of operation half position.
Thank you.
Page one-thirty is the building maintenance fund. And, uh, one-thirty-one, and that's as we transfer money into the fund for the Board of Ed and the town. These are where we can attempt to do some of the, some of those building projects that just come up that we have to get accomplished. Many of them relate to, um, uh, mechanical, uh, EC, HVAC equipment, uh, the heater units in the town hall. Uh, this is for the town hall side, uh, like this, we're able to, we're gonna attempt to use the, for fire three, I'm gonna try to do the, we're trying to do that roof through the building maintenance one. So there's things that we do try to accomplish when we can, when the money gets accumulated. I know the Board of Ed is able to do that as well as they've, we allow the Board of Ed to transfer more funds into that at the end of the year. So they're able to sometimes accomplish some more tasks, such as some of the bathrooms, or some of the, um, some of the repairs that they do, which is good. Um, it's, uh, it's definitely a needed area we've, as you can tell by looking at the capital requests, there's immense amount of repairs and activities that can be accomplished. And this is just a little bit of money to help us get it through when, when we really gotta get it done. Rick wanted to have a few more, he wanted to have a few, say a few things about, uh, public works, capital needs.
If I, if I could, um. I, uh, just wanted to share with you a little things that you should keep in mind, um, I think. For example, my long-range capital budget submission, which, um, we no longer kind of have long-range capital commission where we kind of air it stuff out, it kind of slides through. So, for example, and, and I kind of prefaced my request by the resolution that you folks passed back in August, where you were, were really looking to make a, you know, based on the plan of conservation and development, I was optimistic that a, a real comprehensive, um, look was gonna be made in our infrastructure. And, uh, I don't think that ever was done. And that is a bit disappointing to me, because I think the infrastructure is very, very important. So, when I prepared my budget request, I kind of premised it, you know, it's a little different than my normal request. I kind of put things in there that you really do need to think about. So, for example, my building maintenance, uh, request totaled four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars, which included such things as furnaces that needed to be replaced, that are very old, that are gonna get, catch up with us, various roofs, windows, you know, we did a, a study of, of energy evaluations of our buildings, for example. And one of the ones we did was the PD and the Buckform, and, uh, they found that huge losses of, of, uh, heating through the windows. The windows are falling out. Uh, so, for example, I threw, I had a hundred thousand dollars in for window replacements. Fire company two roof, um, you know, constantly. Fire company two roof, you know, constantly, we've had winters where it leaked. I had three or four prices on that roof. That's a hundred thousand dollars. Masonry repairs to, you know, the old town hall, police department. If you look at the brownstone on the front of that building, it's, it's gone. And it's got to be repaired. It needs to be, that's a, that's a building that you, you know, we need to start paying some attention to our buildings. So again, I, I had, and there's a whole list that you folks probably aren't aware of. You wouldn't necessarily be, that's what you hired me for. So, so I tried to prepare a, a pretty comprehensive list because I thought that that's where we were going here. And again, I, I requested four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and I believe forty-three thousand dollars was funded. Under the highway division, I, I proposed one point three nine seven, one hundred dollars, under highway, which included, we talk about chip sealing. We don't like chip sealing. We want to take over sidewalks, for example. We have a sweeper that's worth three or four hundred thousand dollars. So, so there's a list, a long list of things that really are, that you should be aware of, that are needed or will be needed shortly. And I just, I'm, I'm here to say, you know, you, you wouldn't necessarily think of those things. That's what I think of. And it's a very expensive list. And I think what was actually proposed under that, of, of my one point three nine seven million dollars, I think we proposed a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, which is our share of, of the ICE program equipment. So again, you know, I just wanted to say it because it's there and it's not going to go away. And, and you, you just need to be aware of these things. There's pieces of equipment out there. We talked about a couple of them, the paver or the sweeper. You know, we were doing good on trucks. Like last year, the total allocation under this item was, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars. So if you take two years, so, so for two years, you're going to be, but you're going to be proposing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for your public works infrastructure, which is your buildings, your roads, your drainage, your equipment, all those things. I think, I think you really do need to do this study that you were proposing to do, because I think it'll be a, a real eye-opener for you when you really look at what the needs are. And I'm not making them up. I mean, they're, they're real. Resource recovery. We absolutely need two containers. If I don't have two containers, basically, I take some stuff off the road, because I've, I've got containers out there now that shouldn't even be on the trucks. You know, I put in thirty thousand dollars for containers. We need a minimum of twenty thousand. We won't get through the next fiscal year with the containers we have, because they, they just, I'm going to take them off the road. They're not legal. You don't want them out there. So, I mean, somewhere you got to find that money. I don't exactly know where, but, but it's going to, that's an urgent one.
When you say containers, Rick, you were saying-
The open, just, just the forty-yard roll-off containers, the open-top containers. I mean, we have welded them, we have, they're shot. They are bad. Unsafe bet. So, somewhere in here, you need to find the money. I mean, because, because that one will stop you. Sewer and water, I didn't even, I mean, you've got Ty and Von, which is good. Ty and Von is doing a study of, of your capital needs for your water and sewer infrastructure. So I didn't even, I just said to Tom, I have no idea. If I put a number of a hundred and fifteen thousand, I can almost guarantee you they're going to come in with a number of a lot more than I'm even dreaming of. And I didn't want to do that. So you'll be getting that report, I assume, probably within the next month, month and a half. Now, that's going to be a bit of an eye-opener, but maybe that leads into something better with MDC or somebody else. But, again, there's, there's infrastructure there that is, that is in dire need of, of repair. And we don't, we, fortunately there, you've got professionals that are going to make recommendations to you. But it's something that's not going away and it's something that you really do need to think about. Water department the same. You know, for example, the rubber tired backhoe that we use for water, I put in, you know, to, to, to replace that over the next couple of years and, and share that cost with Harley, because they use it halfway. That's, you know, that piece of equipment's a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's going, it's, it's not long for this world. It's, we patch it, we repair it. Fortunately, we have two good mechanics, God bless them, that, that spent a lot of time and a lot of money just keeping these things going. When you lose those, you know, you get a hurricane, you get a bad time, a bad snowstorm like we had a couple of years ago, and those pieces of equipment fail. Not pretty. And you go to try to rent something in the middle of that and nobody wants to know you. So. Again, I'm, I'm just trying to share with you, you know, like I say, I really do think you should follow through on your unanimous resolution to look comprehensively at your infrastructure needs. Because it's, it's really, really important. Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions about things we presented tonight?
Just on, on the, Rick had mentioned too, on the roof. Do we, we have somewhere in the budget some money allocated for roof repair, where the fire station, am I right? Or did I miss that?
No. Fire company three is getting done now through utilizing building maintenance funds. But there's no monies for fire company two.
Two. That was the one that Rick was referring to?
Town Garage is one of those. Hey, we have the, the time was in the low estimate. We had it as forty thousand on page one thirty-nine for the second year, but- Just so you know, all the needs that Rick did explain are in this plan pushed out. So if there's a, you know, the, the, if you, you know, really, really want to know what's needed and not needed in this plan, they do speak to all the things that Rick had said. They're just, things are shifted over probably into the eighteen year that he had put into the seventeen year. As well as, that's for most people, whatever they put in, gets shifted over.
Yes. As I, this is not in the budget, but as I've explained at previous meetings, the DOT is going to be repaving Main Street this next season. And one of the things that they will do, and you'll see them on Main Street getting preparing the road, getting it ready. And one of the things that they've talked to us about, and I think I've mentioned it to you, is those spaces between what we call the gutter line on the east side and the sidewalk. And the DOT will not be doing that portion of the repaving. So you'll have all the repaving on the west side to the curb line. But on the east side, which is the side where the funeral home is and the moon shop and the bank and, let's see, then you go to TD, TD Bank and then the Buck Foreman area, which is the town building. And then Bank of America and then Service Shop, drugstore and so forth until you get to Fairview Street. And what the DOT will do is they will allow a city or town to piggyback on their vendor-in-place contract, which is the prices pretty much they charge for the road that the state gets for the road. They will not do that for the private owners of those properties. So, I'm bringing this to you because there's a time constraint here. They're getting everything ready and they'll be probably repaving in June, July. So what the town is doing is we're taking a look at the potential for repaving that area and how that legally impacts us as well as, you know, certainly in terms of the appearance of Main Street. You have everything repaved to this one spot and then it'll drop off or just be graded to the area that has really quite a bit of potholes and cracks. Everybody, I think, is familiar with what I'm talking about. So it's something I want the board to think about, how you want us, the direction you want to give to us.
Susan, my first thought that comes to mind is, you know, I've done a bunch of paving projects and-
Sure.
Last time I checked, you can't just drop off and leave a two-inch drop off anywhere. What the state needs to do here, and I think we should probably hold a hard line, they need to do this properly. And to do it properly, Main Street needs to be milled. So this doesn't become, first of all, a grade issue or a height issue for all these private residents. And I, I, I thought about this since the last meeting and I, I put a lot of thought into it. If anybody else tried to do this or pull this maneuver, they would be shut down in a heartbeat. The, the proper way to do it, if the road is getting too high and you're impacting the, the private residence property on the sides, it needs to be milled. Just a simple overlay, I don't believe is going to solve this. And I'm not sure it's the right path. And I'd be curious, Rick, if you-
I did. I've, I've, I've met numerous times with DOT as recent as today. And they are going to do it right. And they will do it. So what they are going to do is they're going to mill from the bridge up to the post office. That would be a mill of two inches. And they will mill right out to the gutter line. They've marked it. They're in the process, as we are, of adjusting all of our utilities. From the post office to Route seventeen, they will do a two-inch overlay. And it will work. They will taper it back in. I've, I'm, I have, I was through when they resurfaced it last time. They did a good job. And I, I'm comfortable with the road foreman that I'm dealing with. Again, I, I like him. He's, he's on the ball. He knows what he's doing. So we actually have met two or three times as recent as today. So they will be milling. And they will be, and there won't be any grade changes. So in other words, you have two options here, kind of. If the decision is, and it's important that we make the decision, however you choose to go, because I have a lot of, you know, I got to coordinate this whole thing. And it gets challenging. So if, if we choose not to, for example, spend fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in having them pave while they're doing it, I coordinate, they pave those west spaces, they will mill a little bit farther in and then the overlay, we've got good curb reveal, it'll, it'll blend in very nicely. If we choose not to, they will mill right to the gutter line, a nice straight edge. And what is there will be there. And they'll take care of those potholes along the gutter line. So, so they will do it right. I'm, I'm confident of that. I don't have any issues with that. I'm, I'm very comfortable with how they will do it and-
I never heard the word milling, milling up there.
No, you haven't. And, and that's why I'm speaking to it. Because that has always been, the intention is to mill it. For the last year, they're going to mill from the bridge to the post office, they're going to overlay two inches above. And then we all have to do our, the milling section, we don't have to do much adjustment. The overlay, yeah. We got a lot of utilities that we have to raise, they have to raise. And you're seeing them out there working. It's tentatively planned for June. It's one of the first paving projects they have. So it really boils down to primarily dollars in cents, if that's what you want to do. And there are obviously issues that you do, should probably think about, is that, you know, where do you start? Where do you stop? There's liability now. You, you haven't. It's a state right of way. It's same principle as you got on sidewalks. You take them over, you just took over something that you don't now have to spend money on and maintain. And as we've just discussed, we've got certainly some other needs. But that, but the timing, I mean, from the other perspective, if you're going to do it, you probably don't have a better opportunity to do it than now. You know, it's, it's kind of one of those where you folks, that's why they pay you, it's a hard decision. It's a lot of money. But I, and the, the thing is, is if, if you are planning on having them pave those areas, we need to make that decision quick, because I've got a really, then look. I've done a very preliminary look just on some drawings that I had. And I'm coming up, but you know, it's not only, it's, it's, it's some milling, it's some paving, it's line striping. You know, before you're done, you're, you know, I'm guessing fifty to a hundred thousand out of, out of your pockets, out of our pockets.
And one, one of the big areas is around the police station. Isn't that relatively new asphalt?
The police station, I, I don't even know if needs to be done, because we did that. So that's not too bad. But there's a lot of areas that aren't very good. And aesthetically, like Susan says, I mean, it's your hundred and seventy-fifth. I mean, you know, you've got a parade one day, I mean, you're going to have a nice new road and then a not-so-nice new road. And we've, this has been historically an issue. I can't tell you how many different business owners I've called and said, you know, come on down and fix the pot. I said, call the state. The state says, no, no. I mean, and then where do you stop? Because, I mean, there's driveway aprons all up Main Street. I have a couple of them. You know, I'd love to have you, I like a new apron. You know, so, so, I mean, you, you got to think about, you know, there's a lot of thought process here. And there's a lot of money and, you know, is it good? Is it bad? I don't know.
And just, just for the record, even with those aprons, on the overlay section, the state's going to do a nice Jap blending. It's not going to become a snowplow issue, correct?
The state, the state's, what the state's going to do is, is they're going to follow the gutter. They're going to follow the travelway right now. We're basically, both sides kind of taper in. And that's it. And that's where the curbs, they're not going to replace, there's a lot of bad concrete curb, for example, they're not replacing. They're, they're, you know, so they're going to stay in the travelway. And whether, whether we choose to match in with the new pavement or whether the old pavement stays-
I'm referring on the overlay side, not the middle.
Oh, the overlay, they're going to just taper out, not very far. They'll taper, they'll taper that right into, for example, Strong's Avenue, William Street, we looked at them all today. Harvard Road, Coe Avenue, Church Street, Spring Street, Russell Ave. They've already marked where they're going to.
But they're going to be done in a way that is going to be safe for the plows, safer for people getting in and out.
So what they're going to do with those, they'll mill, they got a small miller.
Yes.
So they'll mill in and key those ways right in, not the full mill.
Right.
On, on the tie-ins to any of your side streets. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with them. They, they're pretty good. It'll be tilcon or-
Do you think the overlay is going to create any, any issues with drainage, like we see some of that?
I don't think so. I, I really don't. You know, Main Street's got, above there's got a good crown in it. It tapers back. They'll feather back into the existing gutter line. I, I think that can be done okay. They did, oh, I mean, they just did seventeen. I thought they did a nice job on seventeen. Same principle, overlay. They tied in, they, they dressed up driveway aprons. Yeah, they know what to do.
Thank you, Rick.
And I'm just mulling over. I don't know what the right answer is. So what you're talking about is really the private businesses and the police station from really the funeral home up whatever it is.
Yeah, we're primarily from sixty-six up to-
About Fairview Street, Rick?
So these are all really just parking spaces, right?
Yes.
And those are all privately owned by the businesses, I think?
Sorry? Not by the- Within the state, by. All those spaces are within the state. It's all state. But it's not much different, for example, than the town. Your driveway apron is your responsibility, even though it's in the town driveway. Your responsibility for that, and rest of your drug, even though it's in the town driveway. Same.
It's just that the parking was created years ago. As opposed to having grass there. But it's before my time. I don't remember that project. That's close. You try to take a look at, see what that involved. That's probably early eighties is what I'm thinking. That's when that happened. Because if you think of the other side, there is grass. But then further, further north on Main Street, you know, the big, big lawn center there. Imagine what happens. They took out some of that lawn, kept those pods, I call them, around the light poles, put curbs. And then it was parking. And it's commercial parking. curbs, and then it was parking, it's commercial parking. Now, that's not only for the businesses and/or, in some cases, private residences, anybody else.
Well, it's a practical matter, right?
Yes.
Plus it comes down to who maintains them, too. So I think there's some liability, right, there's some liability to the landowner also, so even though, in other words, like what's in front of the drugstore and what's in front of TD Bank, even though it's an estate right of way, it's being maintained and paid for removal by the account, private contractor, and essentially, they're, they're liable, even though...
I don't know if I'd call it maintained physically, um, snow is removed.
Well, they, they've also, like, the TD Bank building, he filled his own potholes, I remember him at an exchange club meeting.
And some of those potholes were done by the state, the ones that are along the gutter line that were done by the state.
I think that was after the, the gas line repair, which they did some of that damage, yeah.
Over, of course, the top, the, the business owners have, some of the business owners have, some of them have, we have, we've stayed on, the state primarily has confined air repairs to here, which is where their water is, so that's air, that's, beyond there, and some of them have done by the way, it's a bad, so that's...
And, and as the state explained to us, after they're through, they're through. So the reason we're bringing it to you now is so that you can think about it, in terms of having the job done on the main road and on those, those parking areas would be ideal for a number of reasons.
Well, for example, if we chose to pave in front of TD Bank, there's multiple private residents on Main Street in the right of way. Why wouldn't they be entitled to us to repave their driveway?
They're not designated parking areas, you're talking about where the apartments are on Main Street?
Yeah, just anybody that...
People park on the dirt?
Yeah.
And the puddles and things? Yeah, there's no intention for us to pave that.
No, I agree, but what...
They're not supposed to be, you know, those are not designated parking areas, are they used as parking? Yes. But the, the areas in front of the businesses, I think, are designated parking areas, with, there used to be lines and stripes there. I don't know that they're still there. I mean, it looks pretty bad, if you really take a look at it, it looks pretty, pretty bad.
We had contemplated, a couple of years ago, when we were gonna do it, integrate with Seventeen, we had contemplated sending another two, twelve businesses out of Seventeen. Here's, this is gonna happen now is your time, here's the paving company who will assist you, they can contact, so that was one for a while, they changed their tack, if Seventeen would come back off, there was a little difference in, so that was a little problem.
What was the other town they told us, Rick, that, that the town did do the paving? Was it Old Sabre? I think it was Old Sabre, which is a similar situation, if you're familiar with Old Sabre, they have the Meridian in the middle and then they have the parking, the diagonal parking in front of their businesses, in the commercial zone. Well, I don't expect you to have an answer tonight, but I do want you to think about it, and I thank you, Rick, and...
Is it just, you know, I don't know if I have an answer, but it, it, my initial thought, it just strikes me as odd that you're gonna have all the taxpayers pay for private businesses to pave their parking spaces and, and, you know, do it for anybody else, it just seems strange to me. I mean, that's my initial impression.
Kinda like sidewalks. It's not like sidewalks. Why is it, I, I'm, I'm curious, why is it different?
This is my initial impression, I'm trying to, um...
Well, my only, my only other thought, and I'm having trouble, and maybe somebody can explain this to me, give me a better handle, these are essentially on the right of way in front of these parcels. These landowners are responsible to make them safe in the winter at their cost. They are taking on the liability of these spots, and Susan, you mentioned their public parking.
I don't know that for sure.
No, no, exactly, but you...
I don't, I don't wanna say no, and I don't wanna say yes, so, don't, I'm not gonna say yes or no.
Well, no, no, let me finish, I haven't, I haven't even finished the question. You, you've mentioned their public parking, which I'm not even sure they are, it's, it's similar to, you have your frontage, you have your rights to your frontage, and you have the rights to use your frontage for egress, and, and I would imagine also for parking if allowed, if permitted in the beginning. So I, I'm not sure these are so-called public parking, just because they're in the state right of way, because the, the property owner, the onus is on them to keep it safe, the onus is on them to possibly even remove them. I would argue, I think, in a, in a new site plan, people would have the right to grass it over, you know, it's, it's their frontage, or change their driveways, or...
You're suggesting that they...
No, no, I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying, I'm, no, 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 what I'm saying is this is a gray area, and I think we need to know a little bit more about it.
To, to your point, if you look at some of the areas, not in all of the areas, but some of the areas, the town has put parking limits. They say fifteen minute parking, two hour parking, there are parking signs there.
That doesn't make it right, and it doesn't make it legal, just because we threw a sign up, I'm not, I, I would like to hear whether, if it was on their original site plan, for example, and they chose to get rid of three spots and move their driveway, I don't think we'd have a choice in it.
No, no. Sure.
Historically, this kind of stuff is, you know, is state right of way, state, and if you know you can't just go and change it, you do a state permission permit, so, you know, but then they say, well, you're responsible, but you can't do it, so, so, law, legally, it's, it's a...
Everything ultimately, it's the state's responsibility, I mean, if you're talking about liability, it's they...
To get a definitive answer, the state's, the state's pretty...
But if the, but if the... But if the landowner right now is currently responsible to plow it and make it safe for use, the liability's gonna fall on their contractor.
Well, it's no different than our sidewalk work, where sidewalks are in the town right of way, we put the onus upon the owner of the property to clear the sidewalk, and so, same, but again, it's a fair...
Well, maybe the decision doesn't have to be made, you're worth a living, too, but, I mean, does it make sense, what timeframe are we talking about?
Well, I, 'cause I'd like to, if, if you folks are inclined, you know, either way, I kinda need to know so I can provide direction, particularly if you're inclined to pave, and I need to coordinate all this, how do we pave the state, kind of left there today? Do we pave the state, they pave the contractor, it's, it gets tricky, and then exactly what do we want? But this is all unit price stuff, it gets, it gets, so, like I say, all I'm here for is if you have, need to decide, I would, like, if you could decide...
And I wanted to add one, one other thing. The parking there, to, to some of what you were saying, Ben, that wasn't done by the, the individuals that may own the properties, that was done as a special project that the town engaged. So the town planned those special parking areas. I don't have the details on that, and that's what I was gonna try to find out, if we could. Jacobson Engineering did do the plans for that, so they were not done by...
I think you'll find, and I did some research.
David, you may remember.
Yeah, I think the, the whole impetus of the, um, project, that was, I, I think, under Terry Larson's reign, okay, and it was basically considered the Main Street beautification, okay? And I know reliving all of that stuff, you know, in, in front of the, um, the funeral home, that was all dirt parking, okay, it was, you know, and, and as it was, a lot of, a lot of the way up street, so in, in the, the impetus to, to create a, a more beautiful Main Street, okay, the town embarked on, on, on doing all of those curb cuts and, you know, paving that parking, so it was, it was all the town that, that did that, and, and I'm not sure if there, I think there was some grant money involved there, too.
Well, if, if what, the town did work like this, because the community development block grant was in nineteen seventy-nine.
Yeah.
The town administered, the town backed away, the town didn't do the work.
No, no, no.
The town was the administrator.
Correct.
And then the project, for example, behind, but, that was a part of that project, and there was, there was three phases, I did some work.
Okay, yeah.
And I tried to determine, is, is, are we following because we administered the project to maintain and favor, and I could not find, Deanna and I both, and we could, I could find nothing. And I had looked before with Bernie Dillon, because there was a foreign request a long time ago, a page, and, and Bernie Dillon went through that file and tried to see, are we following, is it our responsibility because we administered this block grant to then take over liability maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I put that, I put twice, but it might be...
Now, would this also encompass, for example, I keep mentioning TD, and I apologize, the driveways to TD, the driveway to Liberty Bank?
Yeah. Anything on the right-hand side of the Main Street, that one all...
So we're not referring to just the parking areas, we're also referring to their driveways, like the old, um...
Yeah.
Up to the side.
Dr. Rosbo, okay.
Up to the, to the driveway, and, and you, you accepted what, I don't know what, I think it was a grant, it wasn't, no, it wasn't a block, it was a facility.
So it...
And there was a letter that, that we have that acknowledges that that would be parking for other businesses, not just for the businesses that are in tandem with that property. So that was the question that had come up by one of the businesses as to whether they could park there, and yes, they can.
But you said, you said fifty to a hundred grand, I know you're probably...
Just to do a hundred is best, I did, I mean, I did a, I approximated the number of tons, I didn't take into account my things, I didn't take into account milling, you know, I didn't take into account, speaking with the DOT guy today, that that unit price for that work versus the main drag is gonna be at a higher unit price, it's, it's harder work, so, I just, two months ago, I took a step.
So let's say, so let's say it's a hundred grand, what, what do we, what's the savings by going through the state as opposed to people doing a private, like, what, uh...
Yeah, this is the same as I don't know, yeah, I mean, I'd say it's significant.
Is it significant or not real?
What's that?
Is it significant or not real?
How would we say, yes, how would we say, we spent?
I, I don't know the answer, but does it make sense to, um, talk to, it sounds like we're talking about a limited number of businesses, but to talk to the businesses and see if they're interested in doing it, and can we do it through our rate and assistance, Jason?
That's an option.
That would at least have involvement of the owners, I think that's a good first step, if we're going down that road.
I would think most businesses would want it done.
Some of them, for sure.
Yeah. But the decision, you got, I would say, if you wanna do this, please.
Well, we, we did talk about this before, um, and so, put your thinking caps on, we'll be meeting again tomorrow night, so...
Tomorrow night, you wanna decide on this, Susan?
We can certainly talk about it again tomorrow night, and we'll try to do, as you did some research today, we'll try to do a little more. I actually did have Michelle email Terry, see if she remembers the situation.
That's a good idea.
And the reason Rick and I were talking about in terms of who does this is when we recently did the streetscape from Duncan Donuts area, the bridge to Route Sixty-Six, we did sign that we would maintain that property, not the clearing of sidewalks and snow and ice, 'cause that's covered under a different ordinance, but in terms of something should break, or we need to make a change there, we now maintain it. That's part of the state's working with municipalities when they do this, when they invest all grant money, and then your responsibility is to make sure that it's kept up, which I think makes sense, because we didn't, didn't pay for that, that was all grant funded. So my question was, in terms of when they did block grants back in the day, or whatever grant was, was there a similar arrangement? Anything else, Tom?
No.
You mean, we're gonna let us go home now?
Release.
Come back tomorrow, seven o'clock? And tomorrow night, we'll be discussing general government, finance, debt, fringe benefits, liability insurance, transfers to other funds, and all other budgets that we didn't talk about tonight. So there'll be plenty more to do. Turn my Ben on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.